Okay. We are recording and I am going to call our our Crookneck Lake Public Annual Meeting to order. Dan, can you just verify you see that?
I see it.
Slide, okay. Um, so obviously, thanks for everyone for being so accommodating. You know, given the COVID-19 things, we had to figure out how we're going to hold this public meeting in a little bit of a different fashion than normal. It would be great if we could all get together, but unfortunately, we can't. So hopefully, this will work. We, we sent out this PowerPoint presentation on the website before the meeting. So everyone could kind of get a sense of what we're going to go over. The treasurer's report is also posted there on the website. For this meeting, obviously, most everyone is muted now. Certainly, if you have a question or if you want to talk, you can certainly just, since it's a fairly small group, unmute yourself and talk, you know, just as we would be in a in-person meeting. I think that should work fine for this sized group. If you're not talking, just please remember to re-mute yourself. So the audio is clean for everyone else. The alternate way you could post comments is there's a little chat feature on your Zoom bar. You could use the chat to like, kind of like send a text note to us. And then we'll try to answer any questions you have. But I think probably with this number of people, just using audio would be, be fine. You know, we'll try to use Robert's Rules of Order. And, you know, sometimes even for work meetings, we'll do a kind of a literal video hand raise. Also, Zoom does have a kind of that same kind of function on the tool wire there. So that will be the guideline for this meeting.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take it from here. This is the agenda. Everybody saw it. We want, I don't want to go waste any time on it. Every slide is, it's all represented by slides as we go through it. Next slide, JJ. Okay, as you will see, this is our Board of Directors. Although I was hit on the 3rd of August that we had to whittle it down to five, based on the county, the next slide will explain this further. So basically, the state statute permits us to have five to nine members on the board. And, and to you, and the board has to be made up a majority of residents, sometimes called homesteaders versus non-resident members to your terms. And, and two years ago, we elected a seven-member board. We did this for full knowledge of the county knowing this. And we briefed it the past couple of years to the county, our membership. And they're aware that we had a seven-member board. But on the 3rd of August, I was notified that we needed to come into compliance with our establishment order as soon as possible. And so the next slide, as a result of what the county told us, two members have volunteered to resign from the board. One was, one is John Parker. He is a resident and one is Dave Gurney, who is a non-resident. Both these members are also on the ballot this year. Both individuals also have taken their names off the ballot. And so providing that we don't have a member as a write-in and voted to the board, we will be in compliance with our establishment order at the end of this meeting. Those two individuals resigned at the onset of this meeting, which would be just a few minutes ago. Also, the board then turned around and established an advisory special projects committee. And both individuals has volunteered to slide into that committee. And that'll give us the board an opportunity to continue with, with their experience and advising us on how we go forward. Any questions on that that I might be able to answer? Because it came on us pretty quick. If not, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, the secretary's report. Last August, the board approved the secretary's report. You can find it. And then we presented it to the commissioners at our annual report down for the county. All of this information is found on the crooknecklake.com under CLID. Also, we're currently migrating to another website, if I'm saying that right. JJ, correct me if I'm wrong. As we migrate these documents across, if for any reason anybody out there is having difficulty finding a document that you may have found in the past or something's not linked properly, let one of the board members know and we'll get the word out and we'll fix that as we're trying to get the links all hooked up as we go to a new site. The old site was no longer providing us the support that we've had in the past. And so we've gone to a new one. The five-year management plan. This was, we're going into our fourth year of this plan. And as you'll find that, that is broken down into chapters, which kind of gives us a guidance on how we can organize the management of the lake. We do not do every one of these items. If you go to the next slide, it makes it a little easier, JJ. For example, the establishment order looks at the two blue circles. We do weeds, surveys and so forth and treatment. And we also do water quality studies with the goal of having a healthy lake and one that maximizes the usage. At the same time, other lakes have gone after shoreline management. And sometimes they do dams, they do pumping projects. For example, Shamron does a pumping project at the rafter. And then some places will do fisheries where they might stock their lakes. We do not have either one of the reds in our establishment order. Although some of these items, we do coordinate either through the, historically through the Lake Crookneck, the, the association, or we have done it through side studies of requesting it through the county. And so, but a number of items all go into trying to manage the lake, if you will. And that's, that's what's based on that five-year management program. But again, the lid is only deals with treatments, surveys and water quality studies. That's all the only thing that we're allowed to spend money on, if you will. Okay, this was last year's performance plan. Obviously, we completed everything with the establishment, with the exception of the last bullet. And that's redoing the establishment order. And so, and there will be more to come on that in the old business. And we'll go through each one of these items and how we accomplish them. Okay, I wanted to run through a little bit of history going back to 2018. And, and to give you an idea of where we had some problems over time. So for example, in 2018, you'll see the two small boxes. And this is where Curly Leaf was identified in 2018 for us. And so, two little boxes, not a lot of cost that year for Curly Leaf. But that fall, what was significant, oh, you can, you can mark them for us. So JJ, right where that little, so you got that one. Go to the little bit to the left of that bottom box. That's where Eurasian Mill Foil was first identified very late in the fall, to the left of that one, over where the trailers are normally. You know, the one trail where the signs are? Just in front of where the signs are, we had some mill foil. The trailer, the, the home that has the signs on the side of the trailer. He has the, that's where, that's right in that area. That's where we first identified a fuse mill foil in the fall. And then at the same time, they found two zebra mussel adults on the dock that was, that was pulled out at the boat access. That got us labeled with two more invasive species. And that was the fall of 2018. The next slide then goes to 2019. It's kind of a busy slide, but it shows that red zone where the, where the Eurasian water mill foil was in 2019. Turned out we could treat about 1.3 acres of it. There was also another little zone off to the right, a small area, 0.35 acres, they allowed us to treat. It was right at the edge of one dock. But then you'll see the big zones of Curly Leaf and the cost. And those of you at the meeting last year will know that, that we, we only spent 1,331 to treat that, that center zone, the seven acre zone. And that was because we entered into a special study with the DNR. And that was to use the herbicide Dyquat. If we wouldn't have been able to enter into that study and, and elected to treat the two others, the two zones, we would have spent about $25,000, $23,000, whatever it be, to treat those two zones, which would have been a budget buster for us last year. And so we treated the one zone, not the one that's on the far south, which was approximately five acres. And, and we used the alternative herbicide Dyquat, significant savings to us. And it was very effective from the point of view with the DNR. Now, the reason that you get into, well, can we continue to use the question I get asked all the time? Why can't we always use Dyquat instead of Aquaphol K, which is a normal one for Curly Leaf? You, the AIS division of the DNR would let us treat with Dyquat. The Fisheries Division does not like Dyquat. It is not, it's in large concentrations. It is harmful to all species. And, and so they don't approve of it. And so you get the two divisions within the DNR who, who wrangle with each other over not whether they should permit. And so we got into it last year and we're allowed to do a study. There's no guarantees in the future. And so, but we were able to treat last year. So then if you jumped to 2021 slide in the spring, no Curly Leaf, with the exception of that one green dot. That was all they found during our one, our survey. And that would had two plants. There was a couple of single plants that were identified on the grid that's down where the, the treatment area that we didn't treat. But very little was identified. And not enough that we had enough density to be able to treat. So this was one of the first years, well, it was the only year where Curly Leaf was, was not identified to go ahead and treat. We did have one other year since the lid has been formed where we did not treat. But that was a permitting issue. This one, we did not have density large enough to get a treatment permit. The area where it circled in blue is where the mill foil was originally found. And there's no mill foil there this year. And this is a spring survey. So now if you jump to the summer survey, now you have Curly Leaf. Highly unusual to find it this late in the year. And this is consistent with the other lakes in the area. No Curly Leaf in the spring, Curly Leaf found later in the summer. When you talk to the, the surveyors and the treaters, two different companies, and with the DNR, they surmise that it could be possibly caused by the following, although they're not sure. Last year, we had an early ice in. It was followed then by some snow on the ice and then some rain, which created a lot of slush. And then it froze, which resulted in some opacity on top of the ice, which limited how much sunlight could penetrate down to reach the turians so they could start to grow. We had an early ice out, but it was relatively cloudy throughout the springtime. So they believe that by the time the sunlight hit them and they started to grow, at, at any rate, we were beyond the 50 degrees in which the treatment range is. And once it reaches above 50 degrees, they won't allow us to treat Curly Leaf because the natives are now growing. And you'll end up killing both, both natives and Curly Leaf at the same time. And so that's why we're now finding them. But you'll see Curly Leaf is now in a couple of areas. We see it in number four up there, which I believe is real close to Mr. Parker's land. And then we see it way down on the far end, number three. That's an area that we haven't seen it for a very long time. You'll also see now in number three, that blue dot. That was the one mill foil plant that was identified. And the surveyor plucked it and got it all out by the weeds or by its roots. And so there's no mill foil identified that costs us anything. So bottom line was this year, we've had no cost so far to treating any of the invasives. We do have one survey coming up though, which is going to be late summer, probably early September. In that they do anticipate, since we have mill foil now in that number one zone that we've been treated before. And then probably halfway up between number two and going towards three, there was that one plant, that 0.3 acres that was treated last year. And now we have it in three. They do believe that there will be some mill foil possibly found this fall and it can be treated. So we may have some treatment costs later on this fall. JJ, maybe I should answer any questions at that point in time, if there's any on treatment and the surveys.
Doesn't, no one's piping up. If anyone's having trouble unmuting, I don't know. Looks okay. And so keep going, Dan.
Okay, the zebra mussel is spiny. This is a water test that we do. And these are, the zebra mussels are considered the, it's a larvae form of baby, if you will, zebra mussels that we send off. And they also test for the spiny fleas. I collect two specimens, I send them off, they go to the laboratory via Morrison County. Morrison County is still waiting on one lake. And once they cut those specimens, they'll send them to the laboratory for testing. And so we don't have those results yet. This is our water quality monitoring program. We collect two samples in two locations. One is, I don't have a map for you. Well, there's two, just two locations on the lake, a primary and a secondary site. Then they, they, we collect five specimens throughout the year, each one each month, and send them off on the two sites. The bottom line is we remain in the mesotrophic state, which is a very healthy state for the lake. Our total phosphorus continues to decline slightly, which is a good thing. The secay depth, which is how far you can see into the water, is also trending in a positive rate, which they say is good. I will tell you that the average used to be around nine. It's now up to 11 or 12. Some lakes that have zebra mussels and healthy zebra muscle populations, you tend to see 25 feet down. And so we do have a slight increase, but not anything like you would expect for zebra mussels quite yet. Corifal hay A is just hanging steady, where it's always been. Next slide. These are two slides here with lid management protocols. We have met all of them. I just basically for the, did we go through the state protocols, anything of state statutes, and also in our establishment order to make sure we're following all the rules. And, and we have met everything on time. Okay, treasurer's recap.
All right, that's me. So, um, we came into 2020 with $51,763. Last year, we had set the levy amount for 2020 at $160 per property, which would give us a levy income of $21,920. And we had set that levy amount based on the historical weed treatment and the assumption that we were not going to be able to use Dyquat, like Dan explained earlier. There's more detail about that in the treasurer's report, if you want to go look at that. I put expected $21,920 on this slide. Because we don't have all of it in our checking account yet, just based on the way tax collection works with the county. Dan did a great job this year getting us another AIS grant. And, you know, in the past, we've been very fortunate to be able to get funds, this grant funding from various sources to really like offset a lot of our cost, which has been, which has been really nice. We actually were authorized for $11,750 worth of grants. And because of our, you know, basically no treatment, we're only going to be able to spend 4,467 of it. So we kind of over-received, which is great. And appreciate Dan's hard work on running those grants down. We're going to end up about $6,350 in expenses. Again, that's surveys, that's water quality monitoring and just the administration costs, which is a fairly low expense year. And obviously, almost all of that's going to be offset by the grant, right? So basically, the only thing we can't attribute to the grant is the administration cost, which is only a couple of thousand dollars. That's going to give us quite a net increase in cash, probably bringing the ending balance to about, you know, just over $71,000. So certainly, that's a healthy cash balance, which, you know, we can talk about in a little bit. I do have some commentary about that in, in the treasurer's report about where I think like some guidelines we could use to set, to, to target what that ending balance should be. But for 2020, that's where we're going to end up.
Okay, the, the performance plan that's proposed by the board for 2021 is, is identical to last year's, with the exception, we pulled off to update the establishment order. Okay, the next slide.
You want to run? I can take this one. Okay, um, so again, what we do here is, you know, we're going to, we put forth the performance plan to the constituents. Then we put forth a proposed budget. And then in a separate event, we set, set the levy amount. So for 2021, we're just kind of using the, the historic costs. So for surveys, we're thinking about 5,100. Weed treatment, again, you know, we were really fortunate this year to not have a treatment area, which, you know, we've never had before. And, you know, looking at the historical data, we want to, you know, at least earmark out what it could be, what will likely scenario would be. And I have a slide on, on how we can kind of work through the logic of how we set that. But, but we feel 2,500, 500 is a good earmark for that. We've got insurance admin costs and the water quality monitoring, which gives us an operations cost of $32,000. The past few years, we've always put an earmark out for legal reserve in case we needed to use any funds for obviously just simply consultative legal advice. $15,000 wouldn't, you know, be enough to do any sort of actionable items, which would kind of give us a total budget for 2021 of 47,604. Any questions on budgets or financial stuff?
JJ, can I add one thing?
Yes.
Back on, on a slide, I don't want you to back up. But those, you'll recall that I mentioned that we had zones one through four of Curly Leaf that were identified. Those zones are presumptive zones for treatment next spring. And so the way it'll work next spring is that the DNR, they'll come out there and they'll survey our lake. Those zones will be included with any other zones that are identified. And most likely, we'll be able to treat those zones. And that's, that's, that's what we've been told so far. So we'll have those four zones plus any other Curly Leaf. If that's the case, to give you an idea of the difference between Dyquat, if we're able to use that versus Aquaphol K, if we had to use Aquaphol K, it'll cost us 47,65, just for those four zones. Whereas Dyquat is $585. So it's, it's this 4,800 versus 580. So it's a significant difference in cost factor. And so there's no guarantee on the Dyquat. So that's why we, we, we have to play the worst case scenario almost on some of this. So it gives you an idea. And we still could have some costs this fall, although it's based into those grants. So if we do have treatment costs this fall for any Eurasian mill foil that's found in September, we should be able to pay for it. We can pay for it out of our grant still. We don't have to turn that grant in money until after that.
That's great. Okay, actually, Dan, I think this is the slide you were just talking to.
Oh, it must have been, yes. And so, so it just shows a significant difference in the cost. Now, if we were to use the red, the red represents the cost of treating with, on, on those blue zones, the cost of treating with Aquaphol K, which is the Fisheries Preferred Herbicide versus Dyquat, which obviously is, is our preferred. And the reason that Dyquat is so much cheaper is because of the depth of the water. You have to use such a higher concentration of Aquaphol K for it to be useful. And whereas the Dyquat is much more efficient in deeper water. And so that's, that's where you have the true savings on it.
All right, so we always go over this to basically fully fund that plan. The potential levy could be $240. Now, obviously, there's a slide coming up about what the actual levy would be. But just to give you some frame of reference, a fully funded levy would be $240 per property.
Okay, so at this time, normally what we do is we have these three motions. And, and we ask for somebody from the floor to, to present the motion. And then a second, and then we open it up for comments, questions and voting.
So Dan, I, I think if there's no one too shy on the call to do it, we could probably just open it up to this group right here, since, since April's not here. I guess I would call for a motion on the floor to approve the 21 performance plan.
So move Steve Larson.
Can we have a second? From the floor or out there in Zoom land?
Oh, no, no one's going to second it or no one can figure out how to unmute their mic.
Anybody out there?
I'll second it, David Gurney.
All right.
We'll open it up now for discussion.
Open for discussion.
Is there any discussion or questions or comments on the 2021 proposed performance plan?
Does, does the lid get into talking about water levels at all? Is that, is that, does that come under the jurisdiction of the lid? Or is that a separate group or, or meeting?
Well, I can tell you, Steve, that I, water level is not in the jurisdiction of the lid. It's controlling the water level is not part of the lid's establishment order. So we're not able to spend any money on those kinds of activities. We're, we're limited to really, you know, the invasive, controlling the invasive species. Now, our other group on the lake, the LCIA, which is just our, you know, like homeowner, you know, whatever you want to call it, group, which is optional for any, anyone to be a member of. You know, again, it's, that's right now mostly operating as a more social and activity thing. Where, although in the past, we've done projects like, you know, septic things and various, you know, rain gardens and lake quality things. We did have a meeting, we called it the High Water Forum this spring, where we talked about high water issues. You can find that whole recorded meeting actually on our website. It might be really insightful for you. The, the ability for us as that organization to do much about the high water is pretty tough because doing things will, you know, affecting the water level in the lake is complicated and costly. And, you know, with the number of properties we have, it's, it, some, some options like what other lakes are doing are quickly outside of our budget.
Thank you.
And then, you know, again, I'll volunteer. I'm happy to talk to you about what we've explored so far from an LCIA perspective. LCIA perspective. So give me a call.
I did see JJ that a chat came up. I don't know what it was, though.
Is the grant money allocated for certain things? Is it a use it or lose it? Is it time?
I can, yeah, I can address that. The the grant money is is divided into so much money that we can spend on our surveys. And so I solicit our I sign a contract for surveys in January, and then we get money allocated to the surveys. And then so much money towards treatment. And so we receive that to use. And then I had to come up with a third one. And so that was surveillance for zebra mussels. And that was some plates that we purchased for upwards of $300. And that was the trifecta for this year. And so each year, it's trying to it, you can generally get survey money and treatment money. And then you try to be creative on a third item. And it's earmarked benchmark for those three with so much money in each one. Although if you go over a little bit on one and under a little bit, you you can usually explain it. But you got to, you got to stay fairly close to those. They're benchmark dollar figures. And there's another one I put in for the DNR. That's also treatment and survey, separate, separate grants also. But it's it's specific. You you have to, you have to sign up for your permits and with the DNR for treatment, you have to do all the all the legwork has to be done prior to submitting it.
All right. Any other discussion about the performance plan?
Okay, JJ, I don't know how the best way to to vote, to do a vote on this.
You know, I think I would just ask everybody to unmute if they can, and we'll just call for a verbal vote and
Is it easy to say all those not in favor, say nay, and then we'll assume everybody's a yay otherwise?
I think we're in uncharted territories, you know, what what did Robert's rules say about Zoom meetings when he established those in like 1880?
I think we'll just say all those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Well, the question too is, I think because the PowerPoint's up, we can't electronically say yes or no. Is that true?
Well, I think that if you clicked the
I went up earlier, but I don't know where it went.
I could certainly attempt to stop the share for a second. I'm not sure if you click the participants link, there's a yes or no, but
if you click on the participants, there's yes and no.
Okay, maybe if everyone could click the participants button at the bottom of their Zoom, and it pops a little thing out on the side, you could say yes or no to the vote. Oh, look at this. It's actually working. Oh, look at this. And we can even tally it. Oh, you crook neck Lakers, we're getting so sophisticated.
Well, are you getting telephone calls?
Well, I don't know about that. Probably not.
Only appears that we have like one telephone.
I don't see checkmarks by a number of the people.
Well, I might be figuring it out.
Oh.
There we go.
They're all coming in. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with us through this process. Hopefully, we're all learning together. Okay, so I'm just going to tally the votes real quick. How about we say voting's over?
We could ask Anthony and Karen and Chuck if they figured out how to do it.
There comes another.
Anthony. So you have everybody, yes, except maybe two people.
Well, to be able to just can click the button and that's probably fine. So
Yeah, John's on his iPhone, so maybe he can't do that.
John was give us a, where is he? He's just going to give us a thumbs up. He was on here earlier.
Okay, we got a thumb up. Easy, yes. I don't know who 763 is. Cell phone.
I think we're, I think
It's it's carried, though. We got more than enough votes.
Yep. Okay, so the motion passed. I'm gonna clear all these. Okay, next. Thanks for bearing with us. Next would be
Okay, the next one is the second motion is a is a motion from the floor to approve the proposed 2021 performance plan budget. Can I have a motion from the floor?
Go move.
Is that Steve again?
That was Steve again. Can I have a second? Dave, you out there? You want to give us a second?
Thank you.
Okay, we got the second from Dave. I'll open it up for discussion at this point. Comments and questions?
Is that that $71,000 that we're planning on having at the end of the year? What what that what's that money going to eventually go towards? Are we, are we saving that as a kind of a future treatment? Fund or is I guess my question is how how big or small can that thing get? Or do we want it to get?
Well, I can, I'll answer that, Dan, if you don't mind. Yeah, so I would say that, you know, as the the just the just so everyone kind of remembers the general process of this part of the meeting, you know, we have a public hearing, which is this. We propose these things, right? And then the board sets the levy amount based on input from you guys. And so part of the things as treasurer that that I, you know, keep mindful for for our board is that there's a couple of factors. One is, you know, we have to kind of take our best guess at what next year's treatment is going to be, which is pretty tough because it's been, you know, kind of a moving target with the water level moving around so much and the weeds moving around and, you know, and even then being with the, you know, the different chemicals and things. The second thing we have to be mindful of is when we actually get the money from the county. Because if we won't, if we have to pay, say, like $25,000 to get treatment this year, but we don't get all that $25,000 like on January 1, we get like part of it in the spring and part of it in the fall. So there's a little bit of cash flow management that we need to to tie it here to. I kind of came up with a rule of thumb for our organization that says that we should have one and a half times the yearly approved budget in savings so that we can manage through the cash flow. Now, you know, we've discussed, you know, we've been really good with our vendors. And if, you know, we didn't get our levy money on time because of the county mistimed it and we, you know, I'm sure they'd be gracious with us. But we want to make sure as an organization, we're, you know, paying our our good vendors on time. So what I think one and a half times is a fairly pragmatic approach. So that all being said, absolutely, we have some discussion to do because we are likely carrying a cash balance that is in excess of that rule of thumb, which I have a really nice slide coming up to show how we calculate or what what that levy amount would be. So thank you. It's a great question.
Did we have any other questions or comments? Is there anything that popped up in chat?
No, Anthony just said asked to put up the slide with the plan on it, which is, I think, what I have up for him.
Okay.
Oh, actually, could you speak to the non-treatment? What a non-treatment would look like? What is curly leaf versus what we see currently? That's from John. What? I'm not exactly sure. Was that from before? Did I just miss that chat?
I didn't catch that. JJ, what's a question for me?
John asked, could you speak to what a non-treatment would look like? What is curly leaf versus what we see currently? I guess that's a question of between native species and curly leaf.
Yeah, ever since we've owned the place, it's the the lake's been solid weed. So what what would a non-treatment look like on our lake?
Can I ask one of the people who was started the lid to address that? Because at that time, we had, you know, a lot of acres of curly leaf that's been successful, we brought down. And I don't. John, do you remember, Dave?
Yeah, I in response to that, this should, this year is a non-treatment year. So the weeds that you see out there are native weeds. And this lake has always had a huge amount of native weeds in it. But back in, I don't remember what year, but mid to late 80s, we started to get curly leaf from this lake. And we had 40 acres of curly leaf from the lake. And that's when we started working towards creating an LID to be able to be able to fund, to be able to control the curly leaf that's there.
And now
We today is mainly natively weeds. The DNR doesn't allow you to treat.
Now, maybe to answer John's question or inferring maybe what he's getting to is the the sort of functional result of that is that the curly leaf will grow above the natives and blanket the surface, right? Blocking the light out for the native species, which actually don't typically grow, maybe even all the way to the surface. So that's the risk to the lake that it basically becomes a curly leaf blanket.
Yeah, this is David Gurney. And when John and I were putting together the first LID plan, years before that, they actually had to take out a, they had a weed harvester that would cut a swath from the landing out to the main part of the lake. And that was about the only way you could get a boat from the main part of the lake into the bay. Most of those places were not functional to be able to hardly use a boat on. The what we have now is a not even a comparison to what was back then. And so that was when it was started. And we were, I think, the second one in the state to actually file an LID and get it approved, which is why we don't have as many functions as maybe some of the other ones later on. But our main goal at that time was to make the entire lake usable for everyone, including the bay. And that was a far cry from reality at that point in time. So a non-treatment of that would be a significant degradation of use and certainly an increase in invasive species rather than native species of aquatic plants.
Cool. Good question. All right. Any other discussion? We were talking about the budget. We've got a motion on the floor by Steve to approve the 2021 budget. And a second by Mr. Gurney. We've had some discussion. Any further discussion?
This is Anthony.
Yep.
So I do question the fact that with this being a non-treatment year, for the most part, of why we want to go forward with another assessment when there's so many lake homeowners that are going to be having to put thousands of dollars into their shorelines coming up. And with the water levels being so high, you're still running the risk where everything's just moving all over the lake at this point from what you're showing in your charts. I just don't see a point in doing this at moving forward with that at this time, when you just got an assessment this last year. I think you need to hold off a year.
Okay, so Anthony, so we're clear. You're saying you don't want us, you you do not want any levy collected and no treatment for the lake next year, regardless of how many weeds are in it?
At this point, no, I don't think a levy is smart at this point. I think you really have to hold off.
Okay.
Because I really think from what the who, for the number of people that are on the Zoom meeting, you're missing a lot of people and a lot of the residents that own properties up there, that you're not getting their input on this. And I do think that you guys need to be cautious on what you're doing moving forward.
All right.
If if that were the case, where there would be no levy, it doesn't necessarily mean there's no treatment, though.
Well, right, we could choose to, you know, there's, there's things we can do. We can use the money in the saved up money for sure, you know. And if you look at the treasurer's report, we've had years of zero dollar levies, right? Actually, we had one year of a zero dollar levy. So it certainly would be within the realm of possibility. Just again, it's going to be how much general risk to the future years of treatment. Because if we run out of money, then we would just have to set the levy higher the next year, collect it, and then treat the following year. So we'd just be forced to skip a year or two of treatment. And in that time period, the lake would just do what it does, right? You know, like we'd have no control.
But at this point, you haven't used the money you already had in the levy that you just assessed.
Yep.
So I don't know why you'd be going and trying to get another levy on top of the levy when you haven't used the funds that are already been assessed to the property owner or by from the property owners.
Yep. And and they just were clear. I'm not sure how many of the LID meetings, you've been part of the like this motion is not setting the levy amount. This is just like approving the 21 budget, like for the LID to be able to spend that money on those things, even if it's our saved up money. It's not, it's not the levy amount.
No, but if you're looking at going for a levy, you're projecting a $240 levy versus $160 levy. So your budget's set up based on those numbers.
I, yeah, I and I, the the $240 is just to give some context of what fully funding that amount would look like, just so you have some context for it.
Yeah, and I think that you're setting your context up high, though, on that. So I I think you really do need to adjust it down.
Well, it's the board, it's the board that's going to set the levy, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep. That's how that's how the LID is set up, where is the public input is taken, and then the board members set the levy.
And then it goes to the county, which has another hearing on the levy. Correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Oh, well, I wouldn't say they have another hearing on the levy. They have a, they get a report from the board. The the board's recommend of this meeting, a recommendation for the levy, and then they will approve the performance plan, the budget, and a levy. But they don't hold another public hearing, if you're thinking of it. It's just that they're, it's at their weekly meeting that it takes place.
I'm just looking at with my job, and I work with the local governments implementing the new local sales taxes, they're required to give a two week written published notice of the upcoming changes or proposals that are coming in place. So I don't think you have the membership here for the board to make a valid decision without greater input from the residents on the lake.
I think that this particular motion deals with giving the LID the authority and permission to at least have a budget out there that we would give to the county. It doesn't mean that we're going to be setting the assessment. It just means that we're giving the people, the board their approval to do these things in the upcoming year. If we don't give them approval, then that means we won't be doing anything in the future until, again, next year, when we probably have a similar motion that will allow until, again, next year, when we probably have a similar motion that will allow us to move ahead. So this isn't setting the levy.
This, basically from Dan's, from Dan's comments, there is not another public hearing regarding this. Your board sends the dollar amount for their proposal to the commissioners of Morrison County, and they voted through. If there's not a public discussion, then it's automatically being pushed through stating that people, the residents of the lake have approved the lid for Crookneck to go through, correct? Or am I wrong?
I would believe that the next, the next, the next public input on your taxes is the truth in taxation that is done by the county. So when they do truth in taxation, those issues will come up. And anybody that wants to be involved with the truth in taxation meetings coming up by the county can express their opinions at that time.
And Anthony, I'd say I hear you on like this meeting. You know, we reached out to the county and said, hey, how do we hold our LID meeting, given the COVID restrictions and all this? And, you know, this was the advised method. I mean, we did all of, you know, just like Dan said in the protocols. We did all of the notices. We, we sent physical mailings to everybody. I emailed everybody. It's on the website.
And this proposed dollar amounts on the.
To attend.
You sent about the notices, but did you give anything about a dollar amount for the proposed budget or assessment to the property owners?
Yes, the, this budget, everything's been posted. You know, it was all in those mailings that we sent out. It's all on the website. It's been posted. I mean, I don't.
Not everybody's part of the website, so that's.
I mean, it's, I don't know, I mean, I would love help, Anthony, to help get more people involved. You know, we need more people like you who are passionate about this stuff.
Because with the local taxes, just because I publish something on the state website, doesn't mean that they've been notified.
Well.
And the counties can't do that with their board meetings as well. They actually have to publish a notice for it to happen. So I'm not getting into legalities of this, and I'm not trying to. But when you haven't used the funds from an assessment already, how are you putting another greater amount, proposing another greater amount assessment on top of that when you already have the funds available? And it doesn't affect you being able to treat the lake next year when you already have the funds?
And Anthony, just to be clear, we haven't proposed a, an assessment at all yet. We're just talking about.
Well, I just, I see by putting the dollar amount there.
Budget.
By putting a dollar amount out there, you are proposing an assessment by putting the dollar amount in your budget.
I, let me try to make a clarification here for everybody. A couple of years ago, members who attended the meeting asked us to give some visibility to the group in transparency. If with this type of budget, what's the worst case scenario that the levy could be? That's all we're trying to do here. And so we started saying, well, worst case scenario, this would be, this is what it could be. That's all that's, that's all that indicated. Last year, we said to fully fund that budget was $240. When the board went over all the input that was given at the meeting, the thought, could we possibly get some grants? You know, the likelihood that we're going to have two to treat, et cetera. We looked at all the data we had, and we came up with $160. So the 240 is simply if it, because the membership wanted to know what's the worst case scenario? If we want to go to fund the whole thing? Obviously, this year we have more reserve, but we don't know about all the other things. And so that was an effort to be able to be public with everybody telling them, hey, this is what it would cost. That's all it is. It's not that, it's not the levy. You're not voting on a levy there. You're just voting on a budget and giving us authorization to be able to spend the money to do that.
That's correct. We're voting on a budget, which includes a possible another levy coming in the future for something where you already have the funds available to you, where it really comes down to living within your means.
David Gurney, have you actually seen the, the presentation that was sent out to you a week or so ago? Because if you did, you would have seen two more slides down where there's a discussion of going from zero to 240 for the levy. So what I think they're trying to tell you is that what we're trying to look at is a budget to actually be prepared to do treatment. We got to get past that. And then the discussion, two slides from now, is actually the actual, what you're wanting to do, which is let's talk about how much we should make that levy to be assessed to everyone. So if you will, you know, look, if you can wait for a couple of slides, I think you'll find that exactly the discussion you're looking for is right there.
Yeah, no, I'd never seen this, the previous one, sorry.
I want, thank you, David. I want to make sure everyone's heard and, but we don't get too stuck. Since we're an hour in, already I want to be mindful of everyone's time. So, so yes, we will look at a levy analysis in a few slides. I think Anthony will address some of your concerns. We'll certainly have some discussion around it. Right now, still on the floor is a motion by Steve and a second by Dave to approve the 2021 budget that backs up that performance plan that we put forward. Is there any further discussion? If not, I would love to call for a vote of yes or no on that budget. And we can do that in the same fashion as we did before. Okay. Okay, so I have nine confirmed yes, zero no's, and four abstains on that, on that vote. Okay, now discussion.
There's one more. There's one more, JJ.
Sorry.
This one, this one hopefully is easier. This one, I'll explain, this is asking for a motion from the floor to authorize our annual CLID meeting to be held at any date during 2021.
So moved.
Steve, Steve does the motion. A second one, Dave?
Second.
Okay. I'll give you background on this one. The reason for this is we have to hold the meeting during July and, or August based on, on the, the state statute, unless we get permission at our previous meeting to hold it any other time. And so that's why we have this. For example, one year we held it on Labor Day weekend, which technically was on the first of September. And so it's technicality many, many years ago. And so we throw it out there now. All boards are, our lids are doing this. Any other discussion that may be needed on this one? Can we go to a vote, JJ?
Yep, all those in favor? I don't know that I have to stop my screen sharing. Maybe we can just.
Well, I can't find the place.
Find it if it's okay. All right, this motion is open for voting. Okay. All right, that votes with 10 yeses, zero no's, and five abstains. Back to screen sharing. Now we're in business. All right. Let's move on to the annual levy.
Okay, JJ, how many do we have? Board members here?
Yeah, well, April just joined us. So we do have a quorum for the board.
Okay, so with the annual levy, the board sets the annual levy. It's based on several factors, and these are some of the ones that we've been using. It's based on next year's treatment area for curdly pond weed, projected treatment areas for Eurasian water milfoil. And as we mentioned, they're moving around. Likelihood for alternative use of a herbicide other than Aquathal K for treating curly leaf. For example, can we use Dyquat? I have, I just don't, I simply don't know if we're going to be able to do that in the future. This lake was stocked with wall eyes many years ago. Very few have ever been caught or sighted since then. Although some people have told me they're seeing perch this year. And a perch is the case. They're in the same family as wall eye, which may limit our availability to being able to use it. And then the likelihood of receiving AIS grants. I've also been told this year that next year with limited funds across Minnesota government due to COVID, limited tax funds coming in, so forth. There may not be the AIS grants next year that we have had in the last several years. And then the general feeling that we should carry a one and a half times our yearly operating expenses. And so the board sets the levy, but we'd like to have the input of the board members prior to doing so. The next slide, JJ, though, I think you should probably introduce that one. And then for the board, board members, if they can provide us their opinions.
Yep, so again, as we discussed earlier, you know, with our healthy cash balance and my kind of like rule of, proposed rule of thumb on managing cash flow, this is a sort of a spreadsheet of, if we set the levy, which is the row across the top at these different dollar amounts, what the income would be, this is without, you know, without a grant or anything, just the straight levy income, that budget that, that we just approved, and then what the net, you know, income or loss would be for that year. And then the EYO end of year balance. So, and of course, this is just in estimated budgeting terms. But just for reference, I'll use $60, right? If, if we, if we levy $60, we'll receive $8,222. If we do spend all of the money from the approved budget, we'll have a $24,000 loss in cash for the year, bringing the year-end balance down to $47,000. Now, again, like a $32,000 budget times 1.5, which is that cash flow, sets a, you know, pragmatic cash reserve at $48,000. So that's how this slide, oops, is laid out.
Okay, any other board members out there got a comment? Are you out there, April or Don?
April's out there. Except we can't hear her. April, if you're talking, we can't hear you. I don't know, April, if you're working on things. Well, Dan, how?
If she's not out there, we don't have, we don't have a quorum to set them.
No.
We would have to do it at the annual business, at our business meeting.
Well, I think, Dan, it would be appropriate at this moment to, you know, open up a discussion about just public input about the levy amounts.
That would be fine.
So.
Oh, there's April.
Yeah, she's on. We just can't hear her. So I don't think so's any good.
Okay, she doesn't know how to unmute.
She is unmuted. Something's wrong with her microphone, I'm going to guess. Um, as well, we're maybe waiting for April if she can.
Oh, she's on the dial-in thing. Dialing in. She's, I'm on dial-in thing, whatever that means. She's going to reconnect.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we can take input from the group or if the group prefers, I can give them what my, my thought would be.
Well, let's take, let's take some input and then we can discuss it. Anthony, I have more to share. John?
I'd like to hear Dan's comments.
Okay.
Okay, well, as I mentioned before, I, I had a very difficult time last year talking, talking the DNR into the Dyquat scenario. They wanted to help us out, but it took a lot of talking. And, and essentially it came down to they would go into a study. And we still had spent a little extra money to do an extra survey, but we were able to do a study. But my fear was, let's just say we had two zones on the lake. There's one in the bay and there's one over there in front of, oh, you named the place. It's in front of the Parkers. And we have enough money to treat one of those zones. And I get to make the choice. Do I treat the bay in front of my place or I treat the bay in front, or the zone in front of the Parkers? We got winners and losers now all of a sudden. And I don't think anybody's going to be happy on this lake if we have a very low money. Now, next year, yes, we can cover next year, but it's the year after. And last year, if we would have had to use Aquathal K, we would have used up all the budget and been low on money this year. And if we didn't get any grants this year and we had a same scenario, we would have been in picking winners and losers. Who gets treated and who doesn't? And, and I get these calls every year of, I've got some weeds in front of my place. Why aren't you treating in front of my place? Well, they came up a little later. We didn't know about them. Why didn't you treat my place in front of my place for milfoil? We didn't, it wasn't there. We never had milfoil before. And so these are the things that we hear all the time. And so I don't want to get into a situation of picking winners and losers. So I like to have a little extra money so that we can treat everywhere on the lake that we find the invasives. At the same time, I don't like the government having too much money of my money, if you will, because this is sitting in a bank, although it's our bank. There's no way to give it back to you, except whittle it down over the years. So I don't think we're going to be able to get Dyquat next year. Grant money, I just, I watch what's going on in, in federal agencies don't have a lot of money. State agencies don't have a lot of money this year. There's no tax revenue coming in. So I'm not sure we're going to get the AIS grants next year. There's a lot of permits being sold for boats. And that's what's supposed to be used for that. But the county can siphon it off also if they need to for their social services accounts. So, you know, that's, that's just my, my feeling on it. Do I, last year, you know, we were looking at 240 to pay for the whole thing, but we elected only to go 160 because we thought, well, maybe we'll get some grants and be able to get through and that'll at least get us through a whole nother year. And, and then if we had to, we would bump it up from there. But we didn't want to go overboard. I don't, I'm not in favor of doing even 160 this year. I'm still in that range of the 60 to 80 range, probably closer to 70. That keeps us at the one and a half because of the way the budgetary cycle goes through. We can get all the way through next year, levy next year to get it the following year. So that's just my feelings on it. I don't want to be, I don't want the board to be in a situation having to pick winners and losers on this lake. Who gets treated, who doesn't? It's, it's just, uh, it's a difficult situation. That's what I had to do last year. I picked the center part of the lake. To be treated, um, not the shoreline, simply, and the reason I, we did it, DNR helped me out with the decision. And it was based on the fact that the wind can blow those turians every direction. As opposed to the one that was over there in front of the, um. I guess that would be the Adolf Rabies area. I'll call it down that, that zone. It would take, um, wind from one direction to blow it across the lake. Whereas just outside the bay, it goes everywhere. So we picked that zone to treat. So that's just some of the things that, that we deal with as a board, as it's not easy. But we do. And so that's, that's my feeling. I'd rather have the extra money. To be able to make sure we have adequate funds to treat next year, and at the same time, not have to next year come to you and say, well, now we need $400, $300, because it's easier to get used to it. And so I, I think maybe dropping it down, my viewpoint, you know, in that $70 range. I'd be comfortable with that, trying to manage the lid with the unknowns that we have out there that we face. So that's just my viewpoint.
All right, thanks, Dan. Um. Yeah, I'd open it up. Does anyone else, uh, have input on the levy amount? Based on what Dan said?
I, I agree with that, JJ. I think $70 would be a good amount that will, that will see us through.
Oh, is this the elusive April?
It is. I'm back. Yes, I'm on wifi, so I can unmute myself and actually talk this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should set it at 70. That will ensure that we stick with our one and a half times the proposed budget. And then allow for that padding in there before the, the next financial would come through on that next levy so that we have enough to operate until that time, because like Dan said, we don't know if we'll get those grants. Or we'll be able to use the Dyquat, which could really substantially increase the cost.
Okay. So let's, let's just, let's just take this in order. April, hold, hold your thoughts for just a second. Uh, any, any input from a non-board member, um, about the levy amount?
The, the levy for this year was 160, correct?
Correct.
I think if, um, considering everything that Anthony said, which I appreciate. I, I don't think we should go to a zero levy. Just, just, I, I think you gotta have a levy every year to keep, to keep things, keep, keep your head in the game. But also, I think you're talking about dropping it too much. Here from 160 down to 70 or 80. Once you drop that levy that low, you may have a heck of a hard time increasing it. And I, I would much rather see you keep it at, at about the same level. Well, I, I'm, maybe it's 150 or 140, but, but, you know, in my business, boy, you know, if you drop the price, you have a hell of a time increasing it. And I, I unless we're, unless we're in a few years washing money, I think we, I don't think that's the right move.
All right. Yep. And just so, um, for context again, um, our average levy amount over the past 14 years, if you average it all out, $65. Just for reference for everybody.
But those, those treatment costs are, are increasing exponentially.
Yep, some of them are, you know, again, if, not, not that everyone wants to nerd out over the data, but the treasurer's department's got some fun old data in it.
By the way, as long as, uh, as long as, uh, we've got comments on the floor, I, I just want to say a big thank you to all you folks on the, on the board. April, Dan, John, JJ, uh, and who did I miss? But for all the work you do, I, uh, we, we all really appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve. All right, uh, any, uh, last call for comments from the floor? All right, Dan, with that, um, I'd propose, since we do have a quorum of board members, which includes myself, uh, you and April. That, and, and the, the kind of the way this process works, right, is that the board sets the levy, which we can do right now in front of you all, because we feel transparency is the most important element of, uh, our community around Gregg Neck. And so we'll do that now, um, and then we'll move on with the meeting. Does that sound good, Dan?
Sounds good. How about making a motion, JJ?
Well, I think April, half made a motion already. Why don't? April, if you want to unmute yourself and finish your thought that I interrupted you with.
No, uh, no, you, you didn't interrupt me, JJ. I had said what I needed to say. I would make a motion that, that we, we go with $70 for the levy.
Okay, April makes a motion, uh, second. So you or me, Dan?
You second?
You, you can go ahead and second it if you'd like.
Okay.
I'm writing notes, so.
Okay, I'll second.
So Dan's second. I'll just call for a verbal, um, of, of verbal vote of all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Um, all right, motion carries for $70 levy for 2021.
And again, that will be the recommended levy from the board to the county.
The recommended levy, yep. All right, Dan, let's bring it down the home stretch here. Elections for boarded, board members.
Okay, I asked JJ to, um, do the ballot this year, since he was not up for election. The results are?
The results are that we had 19 votes for our resident, uh, Bill McComb. And we had 20 votes for our non-resident, Dan Sanger. There were no write-in votes. As we discussed earlier, there were votes for Mr. Parker and Mr. Gurney. Who did resign from the board, given the earlier issue.
Okay.
So, uh, I'd say that, uh, Mr. McCombe and Mr. Sanger are, uh, reelected.
Okay, next slide. Okay, this is just to show you the water levels and what they've been doing over the years. Compared to high water, and I'll point out that, um, as of this morning at around, oh, sometime between 11 and 12. We are now 7.44 inches below where we were, um, this spring. And so the lake is starting to go down some ever so slowly. All right, those were all record levels last, last year. Old business. We're not going to go into any depth on, on the Lake Shamana project. I did attend a meeting last week, a Zoom meeting that went for almost three and a half hours. There's, uh, they have abandoned now the northeast route, which was their, their second route going on. That they abandoned, they, they worked on that last year. They're now going westerly again, which was their original route. And they, they announced they're still working on, on developing the route, getting, um, property owners to sign on. And so forth. Earliest they would be able to pump water would be possibly next fall, a year from now. And the project is, um, north of $3 million, just for the pumping operate, the construction. That doesn't include any of the engineering cost upfront or operating costs. So it's gone from 1.2, 1.8, to something, and now 3 million plus, or 3 plus million. They also received an alternative proposal was, um, sent to them. But no word has been, um, returned from the lid on that, other than it was received. And, um, but I was told that they did receive a alternative proposal. Next slide. Okay, CLID establishment order, um, since we are now in compliance with our establishment order, there's no advantage to us to, um, to update it at this time. Last year, somebody raised the question, you know, what is it that calls us to action? We took that on as calling it a trigger point study. It got waylaid due to COVID-19 and other issues that the board's been working on. So we've now set a new completion date in next May, LCIA meeting. We're going to probably join this together with the LCIA and, um, and, um, merge it together in one study, possibly as an addendum to the, um, our five-year management plan. It's basically going to be a study on, you know, if we see, um, for example, if there's a a large algae blooms in one area of the lake, could it be septic tanks issue? That may be a call to action or a trigger point for us to take some type of action, either through the LCA or the CLID. And so, um, we'd have a lot of studies out there. They're all tied to the five-year plan, but what do we do with them? And so we're going to try to come up with some trigger points that would call us to action and, and maybe give us a reason to do something. Take action on something. I throw this out there, this is ambassador program. If anybody was ever interested, you're, you're an independent contractor, you sit down at the, um, boat landing, pass out informations, $15 an hour. Lake Shamana decided to do it last year, and they're funding it out of their expenses this year. The county, um, elected on the AIS not to fund it this year. Instead, they gave everybody money for treatment. And so next year they may fund it. If there's AIS fund, you just never know from year to year. I did not receive anybody who was interested in it, but they asked me to broadcast it again this year, if anybody should be interested in this program. And so I throw it out there for information. Announcements. If anybody knows of any address changes, or if you're, or if you sell your home and so forth, please let me know. I'm kind of tied to what the county gives me on the tax document, and then I go to Beacon. And sometimes Beacon's not up to date, and I, I have a feeling that if you purchase your property on a contract for deed, I don't get those addresses correctly, um, and so forth. And so that'll keep you in the loop for getting mailings from us. Next year, that curly leaf you saw is very close to your properties in those areas. So if you do not approve us to, um, treat your, in close proximity to your property with herbicides, notify one of the board members by the 30th of April. And then the first call for the Board of Directors next year vacancies, we're going to have two or more resident homestead members and one or more non-resident homestead member. Will be vacant on the board next year.
Right.
And open forum.
Anything else to discuss?
Thank you, Dan. Say, Dan, what is, uh, what is your opinion as to why the lake has dropped seven inches?
Oh, I, I, I think it's strictly, um, evaporation. One is evaporation. Two, nothing's flowing into the lake from that, that, the blue line trench. They're calling it the blue line trench. That's behind the friendly end. There's no water flowing into the lake now. And that, we didn't get any spring runoff coming into the lake. And so, and, and that's a significant drop from there to here. So no water flowing into the lake. We haven't had a lot of rain this year and evaporation, because it's just as passed last week when it was low humidity, we lost over an inch. And so I, I think it's evaporation. Uh, Shamana, last week they announced they were down, they claimed nine inches. And so. It's, it's evaporation. You want, you want, um, warm windy days, kind of like today, not, not big waves and, and low humidity, and the lake goes down.
Dan, is there a fish kill related to treating, treating the, the weeds? I feel like every year I've come up there and there's 20 small sunfish on our, on our shore.
Is it early in the spring that you're seeing them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's more tied to the ice going out, and we're getting, we get some fish killed all the time during the winter. I see it, as soon as the ice goes out, I see it in the lake, uh, on my shore, and then I see it also. They talk about that lake flipping, I don't know the technical term for it, after, you know, when the ice goes out, and then a few weeks later, the it, it flips, the water from the top goes down to the bottom and so forth. And then I see quite a few more dead fish along the shoreline. But the herbicide doesn't kill the fish. They go more after, but the concern there is the fry, the wall eye fry that they affect.
What, what are the orange signs that are posted, uh, all over, like your property in the lake? Is that, that's just where it was treated?
That's just, I, I treat my property myself, but they only treat out, um, um, no more than 100 feet out from my property.
That's personal treatment, not person ID based treatment.
And the signs, the signs are for what?
That's just my, they treat for, um, with the herbicide, um, I treat for, um, in the spring, they'll treat for snails. And they'll treat for any weeds that grow up, and so I just treat my, I can treat, if I have, I have 100 feet, and so I can treat 50 feet wide, and they will go out, um, 100 feet.
I think the sign is, I don't swim here for some period of time.
Yeah, seven, seven days.
Yeah.
Don't drink the water, no livestock. But it's all down to two days now mostly, except for livestock.
It's just a requirement of the companies that are doing the application, that they need to post that so that people know.
You'll see the same thing, placards out in the lake, on the zones they treat, they have those little, um, styrofoam placards floating around, tied to a a little tiny weight, it gives you the, the zones where they've treated out in the lake. Any other comments or questions or anything? Hey, next slide.
All right, well, um, with that, uh, we'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Dan pre, preloaded this one.
Yeah, I preloaded it with April. I had talked to her on the phone. And so April is making this motion.
April Powell makes a motion for adjournment. JJ seconds it. All those in favor, stay silent. All those opposed, speak up now. Otherwise, thank you so much for everyone who attended. Um, I'm glad we were able to get this thing done. And just for awareness, we'll make sure to post it on the website and read email everyone in case they wanted to watch this exciting hour and a half of an LID meeting. And with that, Dan, I would say we are adjourned.
Okay, the minutes will be posted in the next, um, two weeks or so. Written minutes.
Thanks, everyone. I thank you.
Thank you all.